Good evening. I would like to call to order the February 12th, 2024 Academic Achievement Committee Meeting of the School Year 2023-2024 to order. The time is now 5:30. I am Dr. Zepora Miller, Chair of the Committee and the District 5 Representative of the Prince George's County Public Schools Board of Education. If everyone could please introduce themselves, starting with the board members on the committee, visiting board members, the Prince George's County Public Schools Administration and staff, and then the board office staff in that order. And thank you, everybody, for being here.
Hello, I'm Brandon Jackson, Board Member, District 6.
David Murray, Board Member, District 1.
Judy Mickens-Murray, Ex-Officio Member, Chair of the Board.
Hello, Judy White, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, David Reese Jr. from the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging.
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Bailey. I'm an Equity Coach in the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging.
Good evening, I'm Jason Ray. I'm also an Equity Coach with the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging.
Hi, I'm Dr. Desiree Valencia Moore, and I am one of the School Counselors at Prince George's County Public Schools, and also the Equity Lead.
Good evening.
Go ahead, go ahead, Jessica.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Rivera, elementary school teacher at Rosa Parks Elementary School and Equity Lead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brian Halliburton, Library Media Specialist at Dr. Henry A. Wise Junior High School, and also School-Based Equity Lead.
Take this off PGCPS. So I am Revel D. Fitzpatrick, He Him He Is, and I am the Director for the Prince George's County Board of Education Office.
Good evening, my name is Rosa Lopez. I'm Board Administrator Secretary.
Good evening, I see a Board Member, Lasaya Frazier. You want to introduce yourself, also a member of the committee?
Hello, everybody. Good afternoon. I'm Madeline Lasaya Frazier, and I represent District 8.
Thank you, thank you so much, everyone, for being here again. I'm really excited about the conversation this evening. So in order to get us started, when I ask Ms. Lopez, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Zepora Miller.
Present.
Ms. Boozer Strutter. Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. Lasaya Frazier.
Here.
Mr. David Moran.
Here.
And Ms. Mickens-Murray, as an Ex-Officio.
Here. I didn't expect you to call me, but I'm here.
We have a quorum, and so we'll go on to the adoption of the agenda for the February 12th, 2024 meeting. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The agenda is adopted. May I have a motion to approve the January 22nd, 2024 meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for January 22nd?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So the meeting minutes for January 22nd, 2024 have been adopted. We will move over to 2.0, which is public comment, and today we have no registered public comment speakers. So we can now turn it over to Dr. Judith White, Chief Academic Officer, and her team. So I'll yield the conversation over to you to present your topic of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I bring greetings on behalf of my colleague, Dr. Christy Murphy Baldwin. Actually, her team is presenting tonight. You know, in the fall, we talked about the role of the Equity Lead and what it looks like in practice, what they wanted to see as the year went on. And today, I'm excited because they're bringing individuals from the most important place that we serve, our schoolhouse, to talk about their work and talk about what they've done, what they've accomplished, to talk about some of the successes and the challenges that they've seen in the field. So with that, I turn it over to David Reese, so that he can bring greetings and prepare us for our discussion this evening.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Chief White, and it is a pleasure to be back here with you all again. Jessica said a little bit of context for those of you who are going to be watching and might not know what we're talking about today. A few years ago in PGCPS, we worked on a new strategic plan, which we affectionately call T26, also known as Transformation 26. And during that process, we were introduced to several tools from an organization called Hanover Research, who supported us in designing our equity-focused strategic plan. One of those tools is something called the Equity Dashboard, and it was our attempt to, well, we wanted to use that tool so that we can look at what inequities in terms of access and performance look like across different student demographics. And we fell in love with that tool so much, we realized a few things. One, it represented an opportunity to present transparent data about our system to everyone. So for one of the first times in my recent being in Prince George's County, I'm aware of, I think this is one of the first times that we've had a dashboard that anyone could access that provides information around how different student groups are performing in our system. And we introduced it to the school board, and they built lots of data literacy around it, as did lots of other groups throughout the system, which is really important. The second thing that I wanted to contextualize is the fact that we have school-based professionals, who we call our school-based Equity Leads. And our office has been charged with helping to build their capacity to lead at the school level connected to our equity foci in PGCPS. So if you wouldn't mind starting the slides, this would be a great time to build just a little more context around who each of the individuals are who you'll see presenting today. From the bottom of my heart, I mean, from the bottom of my heart, the three folks you'll hear from today represent the best and brightest leaders in PGCPS. We have Jessica Rivera, who's a teacher at Rosa Parks, Dr. Desiree Moore, who's a professional school counselor at College Park Academy, and Mr. Brian Halliburton, who's a Library Media Specialist at Dr. Henry A. Wise. You'll notice that they all have very different roles, and still, each of them is doing the very important work of leading for equity, and they're leading their peers and the entire staff in a very hierarchical organization. So it takes a lot of strength and courage to be able to step up into these positions and lead some of the conversations that they're leading, focused on Black and Latino boys and their experiences this school year. So I'm going to stop talking in a moment and turn it over to them, so that you can listen to the different ways that they've used this tool to galvanize their staff members to have more intentional dialogue about the experiences that Black and Latino boys are having, so that we can move to some meaningful actions that are relevant for their particular context. And because I love school-based staff, as you listen to them, I want you to be reminded of the brilliance that we have working in our school buildings. Touring frequently do we get to hear from school-based staff who are working directly with students and what their experience is like? And I'm just proud that they're going to share their experiences, and I want you all to listen carefully, knowing that they're the absolute best. So without further ado, Ms. Jessica Rivera, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Reese. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Jessica Rivera, and I am a teacher at Rosa Parks Elementary School. And my goal this evening is to share some of the ways that we at Rosa Parks utilize the resources provided to us from the Office of Equity and Belonging, and to examine the data findings discovered during our data dive, and in order to develop strategies to minimize those disparities that may be affecting our student population. So in regards to building our foundation, the principal and I facilitated a book club last year for our staff on culturally responsive teaching and the brain. Our focus was to first sensitize teachers to reflect on their own identity and experiences that can impact their attitudes or their teaching practices, as well as heighten their understanding on the social, cultural, and economic barriers that contribute to disparities in student achievement. Several teachers who participated in this initiative were engaged in courageous and collaborative conversations, sharing their own personal experiences regarding how equity and culture had affected their own learning experiences as students. This set the stage for teachers to be more culturally responsive in their teaching practices and building stronger relationships with their students. In our efforts to continue striving to build the foundation, I was able to facilitate a professional development opportunity for the staff on culturally responsive teaching practices. The goal was to acquire foundational knowledge to prepare for an equity learning series about Black and Brown boys. It was also to reinforce cultural awareness in the classroom and encourage them to continue fostering an inclusive environment in our school community. In terms of affirming identity at Rosa Parks, we continue to focus on community engagement by implementing cultural events that would invite our students and families to feel welcomed and appreciated. So one way that we affirm identity at Rosa Parks is learning about the culture of our students and families that we work with through that culturally responsive curriculum. During Hispanic Heritage Month, we formed a committee that created various curriculum activities for our staff and our students to learn more about the many accomplishments of Hispanics in America. In addition, we opened our doors to our families and community stakeholders by planning a cultural event celebration that would showcase our students' talents through artwork, music, and dance. Another way that we're affirming identity at our school is through our countywide systemic professional development opportunities. As an Equity Lead, I'm provided with the tools to facilitate those workshops for staff on those various equity diversity topics. When using the workflow, which is a visual flowchart, it helps us to operationalize our equity work from start to finish. It's also a way to keep us on track throughout the year. And one of the steps on the workflows suggested that we look at the data for disproportionality, which brings us to the use of the Equity Dashboard and Data Dive Findings. The Data Dashboard was helpful in that it allowed our team to examine more closely the disproportionality that became apparent among male and female Latino students at Rosa Parks Elementary. Our findings discovered that our Latina girls had a disparity in math on the MCAP 2023 Math Proficiency Assessment in comparison to our boys. Girls performed at 5% proficiency level as compared to boys who showed 13 proficiency level, 13% proficiency level. This is an interesting finding that we are looking further to address moving forward in our equity meetings. My administrator also expressed concern, so we will be focusing our efforts on examining this disparity. So I find using the Equity Dashboard that it's a very necessary tool because it helps our teachers employ strategies and interventions to support these students in hopes of closing those achievement gaps. Therefore, although a number of other findings were identified, our Equity Team decided to focus on math in order to be in alignment with the school performance plan and the district goals. The next area is moving forward. Here, I will be collaborating with the leadership team to share the data findings and ensure that the Equity Goal that we're addressing is meeting the needs of the school performance plan. In addition, I will be creating focus groups at my school to identify some of those variables that may be impacting on the Latina girls in achievement in math versus the Latino boys. Also, using the findings of that research, that will serve to enrich learning. Another area of interest in moving forward is continuing to examine the overall underachievement levels of our Black and Latino boys. And the way that our school has decided to address this issue is by starting a mentoring program. Finally, our last bullet point addresses the supports received. I feel I have received a great deal of support from my colleagues, my administrators, and more importantly, my Equity Team. This support allows me to feel confident in the work that I do. I've also been fortunate to have quality professional development workshops to enhance my skills and ability to turnkey the information to my colleagues. I do want to mention that my coach from the Office of Equity and Belonging has supported me as well by providing me with the necessary tools, like the facilitation guides, the Google Slides, or preparation sessions to help me facilitate professional workshops for my staff. Overall, I'm just excited to be a part of this initiative in the district, and I'm very grateful to have this opportunity to share some of the ways that we at Rosa Parks are examining and using resources to enrich our instruction. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rivera. Before we move on to our next presenter, Dr. Moore, and at the end, they're going to, the board members will be engaging all of us in questions and answers. I just wanted to highlight something that Ms. Rivera shared with the percentages of students who were professional in MCAP. It's important for us to remember that Rosa Parks is a school that has a very high percentage of students who are classified as multilingual learners, and many of them are learning the English language. One thing we know from our data dives is that as students exit the ESOL program, we see much higher levels of performance for them. So that's why when we hear the data, like 5% and 13%, a little bit of context is important, so we understand the student populations who are taking those assessments. Again, thank you, Ms. Rivera, and Dr. Moore, we will now shift to you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dr. Moore. I am the School Counselor over at College Park Academy Middle School. And I just want to say I'm really honored to be here and just to speak about equity at College Park Academy. So if we can move to the next slide, please. Thank you. So when I decided to be the Equity Lead at College Park Academy, I spoke with my principal, Mr. Baker, who's fantastic, by the way. And I was like, you know, one thing that I feel like at College Park Academy, we hold true is that we keep equity at the center. And that's really just being our driving force this year and really just the years beyond. So even after that conversation, we decided as a leadership team that we would have everyone in our building, middle school and high, be on the Equity Team. And what this looks like is that everyone will be able to partake in Equity Discussions, Equity PD, and also monthly observance activities throughout the year. And this really just aligns with the Equity Workflow efficacy and also the support that we've received from Dr. Reese and also Mr. Ray as well. We really are trying to keep equity at the center and be a data-driven school, and that's really just been our focus throughout the year. So if you can move to the next slide, please. So for this year, we are hosting two main Equity PDs. The first was November 10th, and the second will be on March 4th. And all departments at College Park Academy were able to split into groups and do a data discussion through the dashboard. And also, we are able to talk about just how this relates to PGCPS in its entirety and also College Park Academy, and how we can go about supporting our population here at CPA. So departments were able to break into groups, and they were able to explore the following questions. And these questions were able to review the AP and PSAT scores through the race column. And each and every department was able to discuss the achievement maps, academic and behaviors, what contributes to disproportionality with Black and Latino boys in our school and also within PGCPS, and also just other strengths and resources the Black and Latino population has socially, academically, and otherwise. And just by answering these questions and being able to have courageous conversations while also exploring data as related to CPA, we are able to prepare really a foundation to see how we can go about supporting each and every student at our school. So having these courageous discussions in our November 10th PD and also following through with our March 4th PD has really helped us create a framework of how we can go about moving forward. So here are just a streamline of examples of our PD discussions and just the findings that we had. In the red is our electives department, and by electives, we were able to combine our music department at Tech and then RILA or English Department. So they're able to streamline just different indicators and just items that they were able to find and also just answer the questions really in its entirety just to see how we can go about continuing the courageous conversations as they offer new insights and future conversations. For future use.
Dr. Moore, I'm sorry, if I could ask you to go back to the previous slide, just because it's being recorded, would you mind reading through one of the examples so that everyone can follow along with you back home?
Absolutely, absolutely. So I'll read the RILA department. So on the AP exams in 2022, the percentage of Black and Hispanic-Latino students that took the exam versus those who passed is almost half that of white and Asian students. And this followed up with, this could be due to the cost of the exam and the amount of students who actually took the AP classes in comparison to those who tested. So our RILA department decided that it would be helpful possibly to see the percentage of students who took the AP class in comparison to those who took the exam. And students who are on the high school side are offered the AP classes. College Park Academy is 6th grade through 12th grade. There is research that shows that just taking an AP class is beneficial to the success of college. So getting more students enrolled in AP can also be beneficial. At our school, we are a college preparatory school. So as a leadership department, we've really just been trying to find ways to be college and career-driven. And I believe this Equity Dashboard with the courageous conversations that we've had as a whole staff has really helped us create a framework of how we can go about building those skills within our students. And lastly, just future uses of our Equity Dashboard. We, as a leadership team and really just whole school, have really loved exploring the dashboard. Me as the Equity Lead, I've been able to talk with Mr. Ray on just how we can go about utilizing the Equity Dashboard. It's been really helpful just in courageous conversations. And I plan to pull more data just to see how we can go about just really go about reinventing what we have at College Park Academy at our summer leadership retreat. These conversations are definitely going to be utilized during our beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year conferences for evaluations. And our whole school will be doing a data dive on February 22nd, that is coming up soon. And then lastly, in collaboration with the School Performance Plan Review at the Leadership Retreat, we're just going to ensure that equity is at the center of everything that we do. So any updates, I'm sure that we will be able to receive those from Dr. Reese and Mr. Ray. That way, we can implement at each step as we do our leadership and planning for the year. So thank you so much, everyone. It's been a pleasure.
And thank you so much, Dr. Moore, for representing PGCPS and the charter schools, specifically CPA, so well. It's important to note that our charters, our public charters, as well as our non-public charters, are all engaged in the initiative, doing the same work, but in different contexts. And it's really important to note from this presentation, we heard the word courageous conversations a lot in both. And I cannot underscore the heaviness of that term for what it means for staff members to have real dialogue with each other around our beliefs around children who come from a variety of socioeconomic backgrounds, whose parents and families have different levels of educational access, who might show up in ways that represent class in ways that are confronting sometimes. So the conversations can be challenging, but through using structured protocols, the staff can get through them in order for students to have a better experience. And last, but certainly not least, we're going to travel south now to the Dr. Henry A. Wise Junior High School, Mr. Halliburton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Reese, and good evening again, School Board Members and PGCPS Office Staff. Again, I'm Mr. Halliburton, Library Media Specialist at Wise High School. And I'm going to just offer you some reflections on my school-based Equity Lead role. So I created an Equity Team that comprises of myself and the department chairs, primarily from our SPMT meetings, which is the School Planning Management Team Meetings, where we look at data and overall trying to increase student achievement. So my Equity Team, we look at data, we try to decide what students are on the cusp of moving to the proficiency category to increase our testing data, and then pull them in small groups and work with them various times throughout the day, whether it's lunch, whether it's after-school, different programs with mentoring, or the Manga Club, or different after-school activities. In terms of workflow efficacy, it's very important that not just the school-based Equity Team understands data, but the entire school. So I had a lead PD last month looking at data. However, before we looked at data, just also going into the next slide, before we looked at data, we looked at the Black Boys Documentary. And in that, we were able to notice a lot of similarities between a school in Philadelphia, South Philly, with specifically PG County students and notably Wise. We noticed that a lot of the challenges the teachers and students were talking about, we kind of faced the same thing. So we wondered like, why are Black and Latino boys always like, you know, at the bottom of like data? We did a data dive, we looked at it, and we noticed a lot of Black and Latino boys were at the bottom of every category. So we looked at, we had a Wonderings and Noticing Protocol. We looked at data and asked questions from that based on what it was. And prior to that, we looked at a video called The Ladder of Inference, which is very powerful. If you've not seen it, I suggest you look at it. It's very relatively short, less than five minutes, but is eye-opening. It helps you to understand data without making assumptions or without having any biases. Oftentimes, teachers and students will have unconscious biasness towards students. So it was, it took a while because we did have to have some courageous conversations. Some people were uncomfortable. However, pushing through that work kind of led us to believe we need to start humanizing our students. Instead of just looking at them as, you know, names on a paper, giving them grades, look at them as people first, you know, people with the emotions and feelings. Check in with them. How are you? How you doing? Build a positive rapport with them. Once you do that, then you can start seeing attitudes toward education shift and change in a positive way. Oftentimes, in the video, we talked about, touched basically on, as soon as kids come in the school door, you know, people are harassing them or getting on them, take your hoodie off, pull your pants up, do this, do that. Sometimes they just can't, they just need a moment to just breathe and sit down, relax, stuff like that. So I think that was eye-opening. But going back to The Ladder of Inference, you look at the bottom, the bottom rung is observe. It's pretty much like, what do you see? Oftentimes, we make assumptions based on our prior experiences or notions of kids or assumptions of their families, what have you. Sometimes what we observe could be totally off base of what's going on in the kid's head, their actions. And then it goes up to selecting. You kind of select, if we all, I mean, teachers, we all had some kids who were problematic or challenging behaviors. So sometimes those kids are the ones we focus on the most, so we select those kids. So anything, little thing that the kid does, it's nitpicking to the teacher. So knowing that, knowing that you, oh my God, I'm selective, I'm selecting this kid over and over again because he's tapping his pencil, always doing this, he's doing that, it looks like he's not being engaged. Teachers zone in on that. However, with The Ladder of Inference, you kind of create this mental, you have this mental ID in your head, okay, just let him do, just let him do, talk to him later. Pull him to the side if you have to. No, Johnny, I noticed you were not paying attention. What's going on? And then Johnny may open up something that may happen last night. He may have had a traumatic experience. And school is the only place he feels safe, but you know, in classroom, he has to stay on task, which is kind of difficult for our kids. And I say all of this because all of this ties into the data. We never know what. We never know what what's going on with our kids. Last year, uh, we had a lot of deaths in the school, um, student deaths. Um, it was traumatic. And we did have the grief counselors, but sometimes, you know, students don't feel talking, they don't feel safe talking to people they don't know. So they look at teachers to talk to, get that stuff off their head. And once they feel that burden lifted, then they can focus on uh learning and achievement. But the ladder of inference, if you've not seen it, I do suggest you um view it. I believe there's, there are um links at the end of the slideshow with all this action, with all of the um the links to the videos. And I want to say, lastly, we um had teachers uh write down their wonders and notices, notices on a padlet. And it's available to you as well. You can look at some of the responses, but it's just eye-opening of how much work we have to do to make sure our Black and Latino boys, not just them, but all of our students are learning to their highest potential. Because sometimes they just need someone to tell them, um, I know it's hard, but you gotta push through it. You know, we're all counting on you. We have your back, you know, so it feels like a real school community. And this is why um the school-based equity lead um is very, very important. And I would say in terms of support, I get tons of support from um the equity office uh with the Equity Minutes, uh, teachers read it and have been commenting that, you know, they didn't know about certain statistics. And now they're on the lookout to um have mindful conversations with students in terms of increasing student per- performance and taking school seriously. So on the high school level, we see a lot of kids, the majority of our kids will um achieve. But the ones who don't want to go to class, the ones who walk off the hallways, those are the ones we're trying to reach. Because for some reason, education is not important to them. So we've got to figure out what can we do as educators to reach those kids and their parents. And, you know, we have great level meetings, we talk about the data and how parents can help them, some of the library resources, you know, my library, and some of push library resources. We have tons of uh materials to help students learn, uh, whether it's SAT books, ACT books, um, PSAT, ASVAB, um, what have you, but it's, it's a never-ending challenge that, you know, we all gotta we all have to make a co- uh make a conscious effort to helping, help students understand, okay, school is important and why is it important? And which is why I think our equity team is doing a fantastic job pulling students, working with them and trying to get them to understand um school is very important for, not just to graduate, but for college and beyond. Because they're not going to stay a child forever. Let me see, goal setting, uh, next steps, like I said, we're gonna pull um the small groups and see what that leads, hopefully it turns into, uh, the hard work turns into student achievement by looking at the Hanover dashboard. And that's how we selected our students, you know, we look at the data, see which ones are able to, who are like within like three or four points of uh moving to the next level. So uh, small groups, but it's a village, you know, different teachers, different disciplines, pulling students to help them move along.
Thank you so much, Mr. Halliburton, for ex- explaining to us what this work looks like at one of our largest schools, um, in PG CPS. Um, Dr. Henry A. Wise Junior High School, it's a very different type of role when you're working with hundreds of staff members, um, getting them on the same page. But the ladder of inference to help us understand as a tool really helps us slow down our thinking um and not fall into the traps that society wants us to fall into when we think about Black and Latino boys and their abilities and and what they can accomplish. So thanks to each of you. Jason and Stephanie are now going to close us out.
Thank you. We could advance, thank you. Um, so first off, I want to say thank you to our three equity leads who've shared about their experiences with both the equity dashboard and components of our school-based equity lead workflow. We wanted to share about the development of the workflow and how the equity dashboard is incredibly supportive of the process that we've created. Um, we're now in year three of the existence of the role of school-based equity lead in Prince George's County Public Schools. And over this time, we've developed um the workflow as a way to operationalize what equity, what equity leads do in our schools. Um, one component of the workflow is to analyze the needs of the school and investigate for disproportionality, which eventually leads to the creation of a goal and strategies to address disproportionals that we find. So before the equity dashboard, um, the task of gathering academic disciplinary attendance and program enrollment data required the use of multiple different data keeping mechanisms or even going and seeking out the assistance of multiple different people in the school who might have access to these different data systems. Um, the data was then provided in multiple formats or representations back to the equity leads who then had to decide or try to find the best way to create visualizations that were easy to understand and also figure out how to filter the data by multiple demographic markers. So the the complication with using these different pieces of data really compounded the difficulty of following the workflow process. Um, our office was really excited when the equity dashboard was shared by the Office of Strategic Planning and Resource Management because it provides multiple data points in a common visual and mathematical representation, which allows for mutual understanding and exploration of that data by school-based staff who really overall are just very interested and invested in understanding the data and taking action to address disproportionality. Um, so for example, at Francis Scott Key Elementary School, there were ten participants that came to a data dive meeting led by the school-based equity lead using the equity dashboard. And so after a full workday and an hour-long data meeting, people were so engaged in interacting with the dashboard and having conversations with one another about what they saw that nobody wanted to leave. So thirty minutes later, Assistant Principal Bynum um and five other staff members were still just entrenched in discussing what they saw and what they wondered about the data and also what their next steps would be. Um, so to sum all of this up, the equity dashboard really allows us to easily analyze data for disproportionality. It helps schools to begin a process of inquiry that spurs them to further investigate what's going on in the school building. And it informs the goals and strategies that they set um to drive the work of ensuring that all students have access to what they need in order to be successful. And I'm gonna hand it off to Jason.
Thank you, Stephanie. So we're very excited. Um, we've heard from our wonderful equity leads about what they're able to do in their buildings and that really syncs with what we're hearing from equity leads all across the district. Uh, we are, we are seeing them increase their impact in so many different ways. Um, lots of collaboration between administration and the equity leads around school-wide goals. And this folds right into uh our T twenty-six um goals and strategies as well. Um, also, we're seeing now more of an infusion of the equity dashboard into different decision-making structures within schools. There's different data product protocols that are coming into play now, um, because of the dashboard and because of the opportunities that our office has kind of uh offered to show people how to use it. And so all of this is really encouraging to us because it really feels like a learning organization. We're, we're, we're talking about data literacy, we're talking about a disciplined approach to it. Uh, um, and so much capacity building among the adults. So we heard tonight, um, just leadership skills. Our, our equity leads are on these leadership teams within their buildings. They are increasing their own data literacy. They are really kind of managing a change process in many cases. We're seeing them kind of uh, you know, focus on this strength-based approach to our students. All of these things and and many more, they really are encouraging and it's largely because of the data dashboard and the, and the creation of this role that we're seeing. So um, just a few final notes, we did also create a Canvas course for our equity leads. And it's organized around the components of the workflow that Stephanie just talked about. And so because of that, now we have this common language that all of our equity leads can can use to speak to this work. And of course, we're a part of that as well. So we all kind of, kind of speak the same language and it's making it much more efficient to kind of coach through this process. So what we would like to see, um, just kind of looking forward is more opportunities for this work during the school day. Um, many schools are working out creative solutions to this issue. Um, some people, it's folding into work that's already happening, which is really, I guess, ideal. Um, in a case like Dr. Moore's, you know, sometimes all or part of the staff is is an equity team. So when they meet, that work is kind of built into their collaborations. So just kind of continuing to think about how we can do that so that there is more buy-in and there's more opportunity for everyone to engage with it. And also, our office is continuing to lead professional development around the dashboard. We've now reached uh several divisions and we're going to continue. Um, we have now talked to area offices. We have done extensive work with um the Division of Academics. We are partnering with sponsoring and accountability. So we're taking this out and we're hoping that as we not only deal with school-based equity leads, so we're, we're kind of building the capacity of central office staff to lead for equity within their role as well. So we're really excited about that. Next slide, please. And so we would be remiss if we did not say thank you um for many reasons. First of all, thank you, uh, board members for funding our SBELs, past, present, and future. Um, this is a very valuable position and it's, it's, it's making change and it's going to continue to make even bigger and better changes for our students. So thank you for that. Um, also, our fu- thank you for the funding for the partnership with Hanover um and bringing this dashboard to our system. We are receiving a lot of support from them directly. They've been very responsive and also the resources themselves are really very helpful. And finally, thank you for engaging with us as we continue to increase our capacity to lead for transformation in service of our children.
And as we close out, we're gonna close with time for your questions and answers. And I do just want to underlie the point that um or underline the point that last week, we had our budget meeting hearing and there was a question asked to my office around the rationale for increasing the stipend for the school-based equity lead. And without getting into the particulars of the rationale, I think you have just seen three clear reasons why. These are hardworking people who are working with staff, their staff shortages, they're doing a lot of other duties as assigned. And yet they're finding the time to dig in to lead this most important work that's so engaging that people don't want to leave school because they're talking about it, which is amazing. And with that, we um turn to whoever takes over from here. And I think it might be Chair Miller? Committee Chair Miller?
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for such an amazing and in- informative um conversation. So at this time, board members, if you have any questions, um uh, just signify by doing the hand raise and then I'll just call you in order. And uh Rosa will keep track of time so that we can be cognizant of our timing to ensure that we can get all of the questions answered. So any questions? I don't see any hands, so I'll just start. Okay. Okay, I see Board Member Lasai Frazier, then I see Board Member Judy Mackens Murray down there.
I was practicing my wait time, but I see that I need to start because I have a lot of questions. Um, the first one, um, I wanted to hear about the balance that as um equity team leads is is they're receiving, right? Are they uh given specific planning time to do this in addition to the stipend? Or is this something that you're planning um on your own after work? How is, how are you planning for these activities? And any of you can answer.
And be honest. Okay, I guess I can answer that. Uh, for me, it's um after school, you know, um, looking at the the vast amount of materials that the Office of Equity Diversity and Belonging um has given us. It's like they give us time after school. And uh, like uh Jason said, we do have a Canvas course. So a lot of information is in there, but um throughout the school day, it's kind of hard to do it. Um, because you're always being, you know, around kids and staff members. But after school, that's the time you can just sit down, look at it, and then just take notes and then see how you can present it to your staff.
Same. Um, we, we utilize the P- professional development days. Sometimes I do work on the weekends too, um, evenings. But also each month, at least at College Park Academy, we do what's called monthly observances. So for Black History Month, we're planning a huge observance activity with all of the staff and all of the students. Um, and we'll do that for each month, Women's History Month, Autism Awareness Month. So at least once a month, we'll have a full day of just equity monthly observance activities where we'll invite um partners coming in. So for an example, for Black History Month, we have college steppers coming in and we'll be able to teach students about the importance of Divine Nine organizations and such. But I would say it's a balance, sometimes about the day, sometimes in the evening, sometimes in the weekends.
I would have to say the same as my other two colleagues here. Um, it is difficult with the busy schedules that uh we have as teachers, just being around students, testing, what have you, but it's finding time in between. And yes, on weekends, I do make the time to kind of review all those courses on my own personal time. Even the professional developments ha- really help, um, because they are offered after school hours. So it does give you time to decompress when you get home and then process what you've learned.
Thank you for that. My next question is, um, it sounds wonderful, the, the dashboard. It sounds like um, it's actually something that I, uh, I'm a big advocate across the board for all of our schools to have data dashboards of all types visible for our community, right? Transparency is key. Uh, but I'm wondering, what, what have you observed? Some shortcomings of the dashboard? What are some things, any room for improvement? How can we make it better?
I'll take the first pass at that. So one thing we can do to make the dashboard better is to always get people's inputs so that we can make it better. Two quick examples. When we shared it with the Division of Academics, they said, we don't see social studies data, we don't see science data. And so then the new dashboard now has social studies and science data in it. Some people said the coefficients and the, you know, point two and one point zero, like what does all that mean? We removed it. And now we just say overrepresented and underrepresented. So it is a tool that can be continuously improved. Um, so as the equity leads are doing more work with it, remember to share that information up because we can make the, make it work for us. And if you have any additional things, I know I've jogged your thoughts a little bit, please go ahead and add them.
Thank you. And then I have one more question, and this one specifically to Jessica Rivera. Um, you, I'm sorry, not, not Jessica, I'm sorry, um, Dr. Moore. Um, you talked about um the AP courses at College Park A- Academy. And um, one piece of data that you weren't sure about or that teachers were wondering about is how many students actually are taking AP courses? Did I hear that correctly?
So I believe we wanted to see how many students are taking AP courses, which we've been collaborating with our scheduler. We work through a system called Conexus. Um, the long-term goal, at least at College Park Academy High School, is to ensure that all students are taking AP classes. And that's going to start, I want to say, for the next school year. So we're in the process of trying to figure out how many are taking everything now, what's the projected amount, et cetera. Because we found a trend that the students who are in AP courses are finding more interest in certain things. So that is our long-term goal.
Okay, thank you for that. I, I was just wondering, my own wondering is um the choice of a dual enrollment versus uh of um AP versus dual enrollment um for the academy, and that's another conversation altogether. But I'm wondering, um, if within that equity conversation, those wonderings, um, the efficacy or the um research shows that a lot of our Black and Brown students do not do well in AP courses. Um, and that the whole testing anxiety piece um adds to not wanting to test. So I'm just wondering, as part of our equity work, are we looking at th- those pieces? Because I think it's integral for our students to um find themselves successful in spaces that they see themselves versus things that his- versus things that historically in in the research shows they don't do well in.
Absolutely. And that's definitely something, since I'm on the middle school side, that's definitely something I can talk to our high school principal and high school counselor about, because that's very honest and very true.
Yeah, one of the things I would just say is uh we've worked for the last several years with a company called EOS that comes in, right now they're working with about twelve of our high schools. And it's about um polling students, how do you recruit students? How do you make sure students have open access? Um, you don't pick and choose students you think should do be in AP, but every student has an opportunity. So it's about breaking down the mindsets and biases that staff have around recruitment and who goes into those classrooms. The other thing I would say with Blueprint coming, we have to have pathways for students um who get to certain markers and that is building their pathway around AP and dual enrollment. To answer your question about AT AP and dual enrollment, you know, different things for different children. Some students like IB, they like coming through and they like having an IB diploma. You get certain college credits at certain schools for IB. AP, a lot of students like AP classes, but in order to get the college credit, while it does give them the rigor to prepare them for college, they have to score a certain um, you know, way in order to get college credit, depending on the college. Dual enrollment for some kids is that instant gratification. You're actually in college, you're earning the credit and you're automatically getting, you know, the credit immediately. So I think it it's based on family desire and and chi- child children's interest on which which one of those pathways they want. The the thing about um, you look at many of our programs and you see the registration and applications varying because we have so many different opportunities in our district that students have, you know, many choices to choose from. So I just think it's what what fits best with them. We also have dual in the school in many of our schools, our house, our house, our high schools where we are having our own teachers based on the college, the community college more specifically, be trained by their standards to teach a college course and they teach the course in our high school and the children get dual enrollment in their school without having to go to the college campus.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um, I'll wait for the next uh next or my next question. Thank you.
All right, I'll I'll move on to Board Chair um Mackens Murray.
Uh, Chair Miller, I think I'll let Brandon go first because he's on your committee and I will go after him.
Yes, um, please forgive me.
Okay.
Okay, it's Board Member Jackson and then we'll go to um Board Chair Mackens Murray.
Thank you. Um, so I had a couple of questions tonight to, first I did want to applaud um you all for the work that you're doing. Um, this is the real work that, you know, pulls on my heartstrings because this is what really evens the playing fields for black and brown students. And I look, I love that you're looking for ways to um, you know, leverage different resources to help. So one of the questions that I had, I know um as as a as a black male and a, you know, growing up in the and and as I'm growing up in, you know, um, the inner city, you can't be what you can't see. And so one of the things that I was thinking about is, you know, how are we identifying black and brown uh male teachers um to get into the school system? Are are we actively recruiting um those uh specific types of teachers? And in what ways are we doing it?
So that's a great question. And I'll 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 take a a quick stab at it. It's it's slightly outside of the scope of where my office lies. But I do know that um in the Division of Human Resources where I am, we are tracking a lot of data around male teachers and then Latinx teachers specifically to make sure that we are doing the work to um attract and and retain more more folks. And I should probably give you a written response offline with with more of the particulars of that, but thank you for raising raising the point. One thing I do know though is that through the equity leads, we're trying to make sure that we build the capacity of more leaders to know that they can lead beyond where they are now, um, and also continue leading exactly where they are now. And yeah, I'll I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, one of the things I would just add, um, and I know Christie, Dr. Murphy Baldwin has been before you several times. Um, and you've all asked her about recruiting. They, I mean, they are doing everything um in terms of recruiting, just making us ambassadors. Um, you know, if you really listen to their story that they tell about our district as they're recruiting, they talk about the best place to teach black and brown children is in Prince George's County. They talk about she uses the data when she's out there. She talks about the diversity of our school system and the needs to put um individuals in front of them. Now, we know first and foremost, though, we take in every credential teacher that comes. I don't care what who and what you are, because our kids need teachers, but know that it is a priority. I think last year, um, you all put an amendment for it that um allowed Dr. Reese to have an actual position on his side to help with the HR side to really look at staffing. And I know that was around um Latinx, but it is it is as critical to ensure that um our African-American students have representation, all of our students actually, you know, because you, I I I one hundred percent would agree with um Brandon, Board Member Jackson. Um, but they are constantly and they're open to suggestions, um, they're open to new ways. They are constantly finding new initiatives to go out and recruit. And they are recruiting all year long. It's not just a season, they are recruiting all year long.
Thank you. And um also, another question I had is um in regards to the uh the ESAL students. Um, and and this is just maybe a blind spot for me, but um, Dr. White, do we offer resources for ESAL uh students' parents um to learn the English language? Because I know one of the things that, you know, I struggle with in my community specifically is our parental engagement. And then one of the barriers for engagement is the the language barrier. So it's like their their kids are learning, you know, at school, but they may not be as, you know, um, comfortable with engaging with the parents. Um, I mean, with the teachers, because they don't um know English as fluently as the the children may know it. So um, I was just wondering, are there resources available for parents? Or do we know, even if there's not through PGCPS, are there like uh nonprofits or, you know, NGOs or anything, you know, to that nature that that kind of helps out with that mission?
Yeah, yeah, it's a really good question. So one of the things, remember that each of our schools, well, not each of our schools, but the majority of our schools that have um high language needs have a parent engagement, a liaison in those buildings who speak the language. And um they are liaison between the school and the teacher, the principal and the teacher. Um, those schools also have access through Jennifer Love's office at any moment in time when they're having parent nights where they can have the headphones. So parents are just as engaged as a parent who speaks English. We also have partnerships with Prince George's Community College um and some other agencies that offer teaching the language to our families. We ourselves do not do that, but we we provide those resources to our families. And with Blueprint, we have a new position that you will see in the budget. You would notice that I put forth an enhancement for family engagement for multilingual learners. And that came as a result of Blueprint. So when you see that amendment, it's so that how do we get those parents involved? Um, matter of fact, in the next couple of weeks, MSD is having a big parent night around the science of reading for our multilingual um families so that they understand the science of reading and just to get them to start understanding like the concepts. And so we're getting ready to do a big push. But look, Prince George's County, we sent back um information. So how are we going to do that if you're not going to speak Spanish or other languages to our families? If you're not going to do it for our families to sign up, can we provide them headphones? So we're already pushing back on the state like if we're going to do this, like we can't do it and talk English to our families. So um know that we are, we are out here advocating. I know the Board Member Lasai Frazier is um making sure that we are advocating in the right way um for the community. And it's it's something that we continue to look at our funds to try to make sure that our parents, because if our parents don't understand and know how to support their children, their children are going to only do the best that we can provide at a school level, but they need that home and school balance. So it's on our radar.
And just a quick response, I know we're out of time, um, Board Member Jackson, the other side of your question that we have a lot of control over. And this is something Stephanie, Jason, and others in the office have been working on is how do we make people feel in our community regardless of the language they speak in, especially when they don't speak English as a first language. So if all staff members and community members know that, you know, people are important and valuable and there are ways that we can affirm identity, that goes a long way um to building the the partnership with the families.
Thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
All right, um, Board Chair Judy Mackens Murray?
Thank you so much. Um, I really appreciate this conversation and I really appreciate that you uh Chair um uh Miller brought this to us. And I think it probably needs to go before the full board at some point. Or we send a link to this and and make it a requirement for them to watch this. My question is, um, what are your full-time jobs? Because that was the first thing that that I thought about. So each of you tell me what your full-time job is. And then on top of that, you're an equity lead. Am I correct or not? Okay, so just tell me what your full-time job is, please, each of you.
Sure, um, my full-time job, I'm a second grade elementary school teacher.
Okay.
And I do equity lead as well.
Right.
Hi, I'm a or I'm the middle school counselor at College Park Academy.
Yeah, I heard that from you. Go ahead, sir, uh, one of you.
I'm a library media specialist as well as um PBIS uh committee chairperson and also the Class Twenty-Five sponsor.
Okay, so the reason I ask this question is because one of the things that we have been focused on as a board is trying to get some additional assistance in these classrooms for you. Now, Dr. Reese, I guess for you, the question would be, would you prefer full-time equity leads? Or would you prefer part-time equity leads? But we need teachers, so I can't give teachers away. But I'm trying to figure out how to help you get the assistance. Now, one of the things that we've asked for are coordinators uh in schools, and we don't define what that is. But we do want coordinators to assist other than community schools. We're looking at all schools. So I guess you need to, and you don't have to answer me tonight, but if you could just, I need to see your vision. And I think the rest of the board could uh benefit from that uh and help you tremendously. And you need to do that if you have it somewhere now. Our amendment time was over. We're supposed to do everything by Monday. But I'm sure we can weave it into some conversations if we understand what your need is specifically uh to help get the equity message in all schools. And do you have equity lead in all schools today?
Before David, before he jumps in, one of the things I just want to make everyone aware, and that's why I believe, and and I don't want to speak for you, um, Dr. Reese. But um, that's why I think he made an amendment to pay them more, because while this is a topic that we're bringing before you, there are other positions like this for other areas in our schools. As for example, uh, we have PDLTs in every single school where we pay them a stipend because they are the professional developer that when you need help with your computer, with with synergy that's coming forward, with Canvas, we're training them, getting them certified. Some of the people on here might be getting that too. So I just say that to say we identify that our staff is taking on multiple roles, which is why we put additional funds. But because this is such a critical, is why I believe David came forth and tried to get additional funds. Um, you know, for the hour. So I just, I'm just saying that because then you you'll create an inequitable situation because we have multiple positions like this doing different things across every school.
Yeah, and you know, we understand that. And that is why we did not, at least with the amendment that I put in, I did not say which area specifically. What we're saying is that there needs to be additional support. Now, I can change that conversation to say, we need to give more money to the position if you can't do the position. So then I need to figure that out between now and tomorrow night, Wednesday night, Wednesday night.
And I'm just providing extra context, just.
I know, I know, I appreciate it.
Only talking about this one thing, yeah.
Yeah, but I appreciate it because one of the things that we're all recognizing is that teachers need help in the classroom. We also, equity is a big thing with everybody now. It's not just Prince George's County. It's, I'm on the uh May Board of Directors. Equity is important. So we need to figure out how to manage that and do it well. So none of what you have said, Dr. White, is lost on me, okay? I just need to figure out now how to split the hairs when I start talking about this amendment.
And I and I will applaud David because one of the things from an equity standpoint that he did is that when he thought about, he looked across all of those different positions and how much people were making in those positions and brought all of those leads of all of those positions together to try to to try to bump everybody's um that stipend up to the same thing, so there wouldn't be this gap. I don't know where we fell on that. I think it's definitely worth conversation moving forward. Um, but again, that's, I think, to speak, that's where that um additional funds came from.
Okay, I appreciate that. That brings clarity for me. And then finally, um, Dr. Reese, once again, I thank you for all of the time that you've put into this program. And I can see the evidence. I mean, when you, when you reported out, Ed, I think it was a National School Board Association meeting. And now I can see your growth. So I can see your commitment. And you were right, you brought some brilliance here tonight from Prince Prince George's County Public Schools, and we need to showcase that. We need to showcase it more. And all board members need to see this presentation, I do believe. And I see Revelle is on the call, who is our uh board director. Can you kind of attach this to something and just send it to the board members and maybe they'll look at it, please, sir? I appreciate that. And Dr. Miller, thank you once again for bringing something that's really valuable in your committee meeting. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the t- I want to take one question before I go to second round. If I can pass it over to Board Member Lasai Frazier to take the chair, so I can ask a question before we go to second round. You okay with that?
Okay.
So I, my first question was answered because I was in that same vein, I but it was, I was going to ask um Dr. Reese to just confirm whether he did put the funding aside, because I remember when he came before us the first time, we talked about stipends. So if it's already in the requested budget.
An increase, an increase for the current stipend is in the budget for next year, yes.
Okay, good.
Okay.
I want to show it was in there because I knew that that was a conversation we had the first round. And um uh, Du- uh, Board Chair Murray brought up a point. But I had actually put some numbers to it and I I knew if we were to give them the full-time. Dr. White, thank you for talking about the positions and the inequities it could, it could um um create, because it's also an eighteen million dollar price tag. If we were to put one full-time in each school. So that might be a conversation we want to have. It, you know, I don't know whether Dr. Reese might think about, would it be beneficial for them to get an extra planning period? And that, you know, somehow so that they get that time to do the work, because this is important work. And we also realize there's a shortage of teachers, so what can we do to support you? So just rest assured, that's in the back of our mind.
I I think in the in the reality, and I appreciate you, um, all of your leadership on this, when we think about the age of negotiated agreements, what happens when a position is allocated at a school and then all duties as assigned kind of creep into the position? Um, as we had happened with lots of positions and could create a lot of frustration and a lack of clarity around the purpose of a role. Um, so in an ideal world, yes, there would be a school-based equity lead that is a full-time person within a school who has a role with boundaries on the role that are clearly managed. But that is very tough to manage at scale. Um, you all know I'm always going to be transparent, that that's the dilemma that that we run into. Um, but the vision is for people who are interested in leading in Prince George's County to work with coaches like Stephanie and Jason, who are simply amazing, as is Betsy and as is Jorin Campbell. So that their capacity is being built while they're still working at the level of interacting with students every day. So again, if they stay in those positions, fantastic. But as they move on to other positions in their careers, they have a very strong foundation for how to lead for equity and make sure other people can do it too.
One of the other things I'll just add, David hasn't talked about this, but just so you all ha- have awareness around it, is that we also actually also have equity leads in most departments in central office. So it's not just a work of school, but he's working with the different, him and his team. I I don't mean to take away from your team, because him and his team. Um, so my team does a lot with his team. It, but they have a presence even in operations. They have a lot of work going on around equity in central office. So this isn't even just something he's trying to attack at um the school level, but he's trying to attack it at a systemic level. And I think March fourth is the next time that we have a school-wide professional development around um our black boys, and I believe it's our black boys and our Latina boys.
Absolutely, yep, system-wide.
System-wide, so every office and every school.
Thank you. Last question from me, um, is for Dr. Moore. Um, when you talked about that, um, the work with the Reading English Language Arts, you were going through analyzing the you were going through analyzing the data and noticing that there was a disparity with the number of students passing. And I think you had mentioned that you were going to look at the number of students who actually took the exam. So I guess the question was, were you able to find if it was the fact that they did not take the exam, and if they didn't, my question would be, are we still, this may be talking a long time ago, do we still pay for students to take the advanced placement exams if they are unable to afford to take?
So we pay for farms, free and reduced students, and any student that is taking more than three, even if they're a family, when they get to the fourth test, we pay the overage. However, with Blueprint, so about four years ago, we paid for everybody, then we backed off of that and we went to the, because we were on having to make cuts. But with Blueprint, we will be back at paying for, if it stays, we'll be back. If we put in the funds, I put in the funds for next year's budget to pay for every single student that wants to, that's in AP and wants to take an AP course. Now, I think where my office is going to have to draw the line with students is I think that we need to have an expectation if our students take the course that our students will take the test. Because you'll get some students that, you know, when we weren't paying, you know, you take the course and you don't even take the test. But I think that we need to set an expectation that you take the course, we're paying and you're going to sit for the exam. So that is in my budget for next year as an amendment that would have already come before you is to pay for every single student who takes a test.
Perfect. Okay, so you answered my question. All right, we can go to second round.
Before we do second round, I'm so sorry to do this, but we referenced the equity minutes that came out regularly. So Dr. Moore is at a school that has a very particular population that's very diverse. Our equity minute that went out today essentially said, if you are Latino and a boy in Prince George's County and took an AP exam as a group, forty-five percent of you passed the exam. If you look at all other students in PGCPs, all other groups together, taking out Latino boys, forty-three percent passed an AP exam. So on the micro level at one school, you might see disparities that suggest that our Latino boys at some schools might not be having as much access or performing as well. When we look across the entire district, there's a counter narrative that's worthy of exploration. And thank you, Chair Miller, for letting me do that.
Thank you. Thank you. That's helpful. All right, Board Member Brandon Jackson and Board Member LaSai Frazier.
No, Dr. White, already, I think we were tracking on the same wavelength. I was thinking about, you know, putting in an amendment to figure out we can pay for the test for everybody too. So that was an amazing thought. So we're tracking. That was my comment, actually. So I don't have anything else to say. We were on the same page with that.
Okay, so Board Member LaSai Frazier.
So I'm thinking about, I have, I have three questions. The first one has to do with continuing the conversation of the parent engagement specialist. They fall in the same type of stipend as our equity leads, right? I'm also wondering if we need to look at that because part of it.
They actually don't fall into the same thing. That is their job.
Full-time?
Full-time. That is their full-time job. They fall under Sheila Jackson's office, but in the schools that they're in, so you'll definitely see them in like your High Point, your Rosa Parks, your Mary Harris Mother Jones, Cherokee Lane, like where you have high, that is their one hundred percent role. They are in those buildings.
Okay, okay, okay. That's a good clarification for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other question that I had was, in working with the Black and Brown Boys, are we utilizing their voices as part of PDs?
I would say, and then this is just me, this is just testing my knowledge, am I paying attention to what's going on in the system? The entry point that this team usually always does is to have a roundtable discussion with our students. And it is the backdrop to what our staff sees and hears, which causes enough pause and clutching your pearls to make you reflect on yourself and your behavior and your biases to impact change. So every time we've done one, he always has the voice of our students in that, whatever that is, we're studying as a group, as the break drops to kick off what we're talking about.
You get a platinum star, Dr. White.
I love it. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I do believe that we need to start with student voices, so I'm happy to hear that that's the beginning. The last question I had was something that Jessica Rivera talked about, Latinx girls underperforming at Rosa Parks in math. And I'm wondering if that's something, is that data by something that's happening across the county? Or is it specific to Rosa Parks? Just a wondering that I have. Do we know?
From my understanding, I believe it was just Rosa Parks, because when we were exploring the data dashboard, that's when we were doing comparisons with just our school compared to a nearby neighboring school. Am I answering that, Ms. Bailey? Correctly?
I'm actually not sure. I'm trying to like jump in the dashboard real quick to find out, but maybe that's just a question we need to follow up on.
And what I would say in general, you know, the good thing about data dashboards, that the equity dashboard and the data dashboard, and why we talk to schools about collaborative planning and really utilizing your data is because it's a lot of things, right? Sometimes our boys aren't doing well simply because they're not writing on the assessment. Many of our students are not writing. And so when you look at the point distribution, if our students were just to write their reasoning, all our scores would go up. So when you, so it's always good to look at how we do, where the standards are, we're not doing well, where the repeated standards we aren't doing well, what are we doing about that as we go back into curriculum? But where are those moments where we had an opportunity to write and we didn't? And what we're finding is that many of our students are not writing on the written assessment. And part of MCAP is writing, both in reading and in mathematics.
So just to answer your question, I was able to pull the dashboard up and see that in 2023, if you look at Hispanic male students and Hispanic or Latinx female students, there was a three percentage point disproportionality. So the boys scored, nine percent of them scored proficient on MCAP math, and six percent of the girls scored proficient on MCAP math. So that was a district trend.
I'd be curious to see what that is for reading. Is it reversed with the same population? Or is that same, does it hold true?
These are all great questions, and this is why I love being data-wise, system-wise, when we look at data. And thank you for being so quick, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Board Chair McInnes-Murray.
Thank you. One final question. I thought I understood the superintendent to say we were going to have an assistant, parent assistant in all schools. Do you understand that or do I need to revisit that? Because I thought that's what I heard. Dr. White.
I'm not going to speak for the superintendent.
I get it, I get it.
It's absolutely something he could have said, so it might be a question that you can revisit.
I will, I will.
Because that, it really falls under schools, well, actually it's communications. I think Sheila Jackson actually now falls under communications.
Right. That's who we were trying to help, so.
Sometimes I don't know.
Yeah, I'm trying to leak it all and get ready for Wednesday and Thursday night, so thank you so much. That's it. Thank you, Chair Miller.
Oh, no worries. I have one more question if Board Member LaSai Frazier can take the leap. Okay. This is on, actually I have two, but I'm going to this one. Unpacking when Mr. Hubble took. Can you say your last name for me again?
Halliburton.
Halliburton. When Mr. Halliburton spoke about the ladder of inference, and that's a very, very powerful tool. So you go through the ladder of inference and the staff members say, oh my God, here are some areas that we really need to look into in terms of our behaviors and how maybe students are. How did you, or how do you, if you are, narrow down a focus for the school so that you can start seeing some change school-wide? Because in a high school, that's, that's, that's huge. And I can imagine that there were different things that came out of the ladder of inference. And you talked about students being disengaged. They don't want to go to class. I get it. They're running, they're, they're either sitting in the class not doing anything, or they're going to the bathroom five times, right? Because they're disengaged. So how do you fit, how did you or are you working on figuring out a school focus so you can really start measuring impact in terms of changing teacher or staff behavior and how it's impacting students?
Thank you, Dr. Miller, for a very good question. So we began with, we watched a snippet of the Black Boys Documentary. And if you have not seen us, just, you know, everyone see it, it's very powerful. And we had a conversation about our actions, whether our actions are helping students or harming students. Because oftentimes the adults unbiasedly, they can like cause a lot of harm to our students in unintentional harm. And after watching the ladder of inference is more, it's more so a self-reflection piece. So they had a pamphlet that could write down how they felt was aha moment for them. And I think you have access to the pamphlets that the teachers submitted. But it's for the most part self-reflective and had a few staff members volunteer to share what they wrote. And that's how we jumpstarted the conversation. So one staff member started talking about something that they noticed or something that they've been doing all wrong, in their words. And then other staff members chimed in and then started offering suggestions of how to overcome that bias. So you know, one small, one small step to start can just can blow up to something very, very big and very powerful to affect change.
Absolutely. I was just curious whether there were any, whether there was anything school-wide that as a staff, you said, you know what, we noticed that when the students, I'm making this up. We noticed when the students come in, we ask them like, take off your hat, but we forget to say good morning. So we all decide as a school, you know what, let's change that behavior. Let's at least acknowledge good morning and then, then, hey, can you take off your hat, something? I'm making that up as a behavior, but whether through that ladder of inference, the inference, there was something school-wide that as a staff, you, meaning the whole staff, said, you know what, here's something that we want to start working.
Here's an example of what that could look like in a school. So when you have a media specialist who might be on a leadership team, the level of conversation that the staff is having around this awareness has to be elevated to the school administration. Because a school like WISE has so many different areas of focus, right? And so we really want to make sure that the school performance, the school planning process, school performance process really allows for us to look at achievement data and the behavioral components that connect to achievement and how our staff members behaving towards students. So if I could wave my magic wand, a serious school improvement effort would say, hey, school David Reese Jr., this is called David Reese High School, right? We are focused on improving the experiences of our Black and Latino male students. The staff is aware of it, the parents are aware of it, and the students are aware of it. Because you have to have all people aware of what the goal is to have ultimate accountability. So when the staff members and the students replied to the data surveys to say, this is what our experiences are, we can very quickly triangulate to see if we're meeting our goal. And if I know that the staff and the students and the parents and everybody is watching because we want to value our Black and Brown boys, then that's when you notice behaviors start to change. So in my ideal world, we get to a point where the conversation is elevated at that level, and then we can really make sure everybody's engaged and making schooling better for everyone.
Makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That is it for me. Any more questions, board members? We have about six more minutes. Board Member LaSai Frazier.
So I don't have a question. I just want to say, thank you. Thank you very much for everything that you're doing. This is my passion. It's what I live every day for, and I'm encouraged. I know there's a lot more work to be done, and I wish that we could fund you completely a hundred percent in your school so that you can do it. It's a twenty-four-hour job. It's not just from eight to three o'clock. We have to live it. So I commit myself that I will try as hard as possible to make sure that that happens, that we get positions, even if it costs us twenty million dollars, but we need to do it because it's our children. So thank you.
This will be my final word. As in my job as Director of Equity, I have to name the fact that we had a conversation around Black and Latino boys. And as far as I'm understanding, we don't have a Latino male represented in the conversation. It's not because we tried, and it's not because they're not out there, but I do want to represent, I just want to name the absence of a very important group that I wish were here.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I know that this conversation can go on and we'll figure out a way for it to continue. And I do echo what Board Chair McInnes-Murray said. This is a really important conversation. And I wish we had more time. So Board Chair, let's figure out how we can do this, because this is something that we need to continue to ensure that our community knows how important it is to us and the amount of work that the school administration and team and members of the schoolhouse are really putting in on the ground to ensure that we're addressing any areas that may impact students doing while it's in school. So I definitely want to continue to bring this message and this to the forefront. So with that said, any follow-up items will be posted on Board Docs for our review. And I definitely want to say thank you again to Dr. White, Dr. Reese, and your entire team for investing the time in this and ensuring that we are well-informed, and I know there's more to come. And for my colleagues and the board office staff, thank you again. And with that said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second, you say a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The time is now, six fifty-seven, and we are adjourned. Thank you again and good night.
Good night.
Good night.